All right, I'm calling the regular meeting to order for Monday, November 13th, 2023. Ms. Peck, please call and roll.
John Cretier?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, please rise for the speaking of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a ally for which stands one nation, united in the midst of war.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And fortunately, we are here at the school forest to be able to celebrate and to take a look at a tremendous place which has been, I think, waiting for a long period of time. I remember my own children waiting to get out here when they were in third, fourth, and fifth grade, and that's many years ago. So to come out here and to see what has been developed, for me, there's a little shiver up the spine to think about what our students of the future are going to be able to see as we move forward. So with that, you haven't come to listen to me talk about this, let's move right to our speakers for this evening. First of all, I'm going to just read this off very quickly. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by the participants shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Ms. Peck will identify the time, and it will be up on the display boards to your left. Speakers shall direct all comments to the Board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments may not identify specific personnel or students by name or through the use of sufficiently detailed description. Residing officer values civic discourse, and with that, we will move to our first speaker. Our first speaker is Scott Seefeld. For everybody to hear, get as close to the mic as possible.
Sure, sure. Scott Seefeld, 2007 Garth Street. For analogy, I wonder if you've watched the difficult but important Netflix series called Challenger: The Final Flight. It depicts the personalities and decisions that led to the destruction of the space shuttle Challenger in 1986. I was in Mr. Kowalski's class at John Marshall. Challenger's explosion was thought to be a mechanical failure, which it was, but it was also a symptom, a consequence, of the culture created by NASA leaders who ignored data contrary to their bias. But there was a guy who spoke up, one engineer who had worked on solid rocket boosters and knew what was going to happen. Actually, there were others who knew as well but were too afraid to speak up and risk losing their jobs. Besides, thought they, so many smart people had already put in so much effort. There was literally a space shuttle sitting on the launch pad. What could go wrong? So they launched. The Rogers Commission concluded that the fault lay with the rubber O-rings and with the attitude of NASA leaders. In my line of work, it's what's called hardness of heart, and it's a shame because everybody wanted to see that shuttle in space. Similarly, everybody gathered here tonight wants the same thing, a forward-looking school district that respects our heritage and gives every possible opportunity to every student and where every teacher feels their value. And everybody knows that changes are necessary to adjust to changing times. No one is arguing for the status quo. Healthy change, even sacrifice, will be made by a community when it is informed and included in the change process, especially when the people see evidence of their children flourishing and their money being spent in the ways that were promised. And there's more good news. Time is on your side. We're in Marathon County. You're not in a hurry. If something is worth doing, as our grandparents used to say, it's worth doing right, not fast. Take time to listen with the ears of softened hearts to the concerns of your neighbors. Nobody's child should be made to sit on a bus for 7,020 hours, which is the worst-case scenario under your current restructuring plan. For me, that is the restructuring deal-breaker that you have not been able to find. And please, listen to Pat, who I do not know but can clearly see is the voice of reason the district needs for such a time as this.
Thank you. All right, moving on. I'm going to keep on things moving so I can keep on getting enough thoughts spoken and people up in front. So Jane Roosh.
Jane Roosh, 4522 Forest Valley Road. First, let me publicly thank Pat. I thanked him earlier, but I want to thank him in public for his attempt to hold the Board accountable. I stand here disgusted at what my Board is trying to do to my beloved Wausau School District. I worked on the passage of this referendum only to see the money used completely differently than what appeared on the referendum question. Over the years, I attended numerous sessions regarding referendums, adding to the cautions given to us by our district's own Chief Financial Officer. It was clear that we were required by law to not stray from the referendum question. To do so would not only be unethical but illegal as well. This Board has completely deviated from the promises the Board made when we asked for the $120 million. In my 15 years, there was never a serious discussion about combining high schools at any meeting. Prior to my last election cycle, Mr. Boucher stopped me in the hallway and suggested I run on combining the high schools, and I told him at the time, Wausau was not ready for that concept, and we would need much work with the people of the Wausau School District if the Board wanted to head in that direction. Although it does make me wonder when and if this idea was being discussed behind the scenes. The only idea that seems to have gotten proper consideration is the athletic department. The original plan was that Tom Field would get artificial turf. Now it's being put in everywhere. It was recently revealed that the science department at West is not adequate. I'm sure that that's not the only shortfall. We also know that there are not enough bus drivers for the current setup, so there definitely won't be enough for the half-cooked plan that we have devised. Driving buses are very definition of a split-shift work. For a significant part of the school year, the drivers go to work in the dark and they come home in the dark for four hours of pay. The hours make it difficult to hold down a second job, which limits the work pool. It's not a job that fits in many people's lives. From the evidence we witnessed this year, the bus driver market is tapped out. There will not be enough drivers to implement the Board's pie-in-the-sky plan. Whether you approve of this plan or not, it doesn't really matter. It was done unethically and very possibly illegally, and it needs to be scrapped and reworked to fit the original referendum question or taken back to the voters for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next person up is Dana Parlier.
Hi, I'm Dana Parlier, 154th Avenue, Marathon, Wisconsin. So I am the WEA president, and I just, we as an association decided that we needed to share the positives that we were doing for our staff and our students, so that's why I'm here. Just wanted to share a few things. As you've seen probably in the news, the turkey drive, one of our own, actually, it's our secretary of our association spearheads the whole thing and as of yesterday raised $21,500, which is super great. We will have 901 turkeys and hams distributed to families in the district. That is happening on Thursday, so if any of you want to schlep some turkeys or hams, come and join us. The second thing I just wanted to mention is, I'm not sure you're aware or not, but we have a mentee-mentor program with the district. So new teachers to the district get a mentor, somebody who's been here for a few years and/or many years. And the WEA hosted the mentee dinner a couple weeks ago just to welcome and continue to encourage those new staff, stay with us, we know this is hard work. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is the continued collaboration that we have with LAT and our members of the LAT, we meet with once a month to just talk about things that are going on, things that teachers need and students need. And then last month, I believe, we talked with John Uding and Reggie to talk about Canvas and just give them some feedback as to what we as teachers are seeing and how we can improve that process. So just wanted to keep you updated as to what we as an association do for our kids and our fellow colleagues and moving us forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Dana. Aaron Anderson.
My name is Aaron Anderson. I live at 227070 Boulder Ridge Circle, and I'm here to talk about the restructure plan tonight, and I think there's a lot of positives and negatives that we can discuss, you know, busing, science classrooms, budget, but tonight I'd like to talk about public support. And the reason I want to bring that up is I think it's pretty clear from my personal life that there is not public support in the community for this plan. So how can I be so confident of this? Well, the one thing I don't have is data. I would love to have data and present to you data that everybody can understand, because everybody loves data, but I don't have that. What I can present to you is my personal life, that I grew up here. I have a lot of contacts from childhood and from sports. I work at a busy job, and I have lots of social contacts at work, and I have lots of friends and family members, including some that work for the Wausau School District. And I can tell you that opposition to this restructure plan is everywhere. The opposition is not just lip service. These are people who are already voting with their feet. Some families that we know are considering leaving the district, and some families we know have already left. Some families that are close to me were going to choice into Wausau School District because it's awesome, but now they're not going to because of the restructure plan. Some teachers that we know are already considering resignation if the restructure plan goes through. So these people are not leaving due to lack of understanding of the plan. They're not leaving because they're undereducated. They're leaving because they do understand the plan, and they don't believe that it's the best possible policy that we can have. So if I'm correct that the public support for this restructure plan is very low, we're about to spend a great deal of time, money, and effort in an inflationary environment when we'll have decreasing enrollment and minimal public support. Referendums do not pass under these conditions. So my ask of the Board is, please, if you think I am correct, please consider adjustments and modifications to your plan. Please consider Pat's plan or any positives of any other plan to mesh them together and make it the best policy it can be. If you think I am not correct, please consider a public survey to show the public support that you have, then go forward with confidence and public engagement that you know you can go forward with all of us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, well-stated. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the other comments. That's one of the reasons why we have taken a look and listened to a lot of people from a lot of different areas. We have tried to bring those opinions together and talk about those, and we're going to continue to do that. So as we go through this evening, we are going to continue to discuss a lot of things, and so I hope you stay for that part. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Appointments. This is the Consent Agenda. Appointments, that'd be additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes, regular session of October 9th, 2023, and the special session of October 23, 2023. Payment to bills, Budget Status and Investment Report, donations to the district. They are St. Stephen Lutheran Church, Gaige Welding and Machines Incorporated, Maine Lions Club, Midwest Amusements, Wausau, American Online Giving Foundation, Forest Park Neighborhood, GPM Southeast, and Play On Sports. I'm seeking a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seven, Old and Recurring Business, Legal Expense Summary for First Quarter. At the October Ed Ops Meeting, Josh Rigut presented a summary report presenting all legal council expenses incurred during the first quarter. That has already taken place. Agenda Item Eight, New Business, 2023-24 Student Demographic Report. That was also given to us at an earlier meeting. I believe Mr. Uding did a tremendous job in going through that information. Agenda Item Eight-B, Red Granite Job Description was placed in front of us. Administration is seeking approval of certified staff job descriptions in support of the opening of the new Red Granite Charter School in the fall of 2024. I'm seeking a motion to approve the Red Granite Charter School job description as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Eight-C, Course Approval, Exploring Computer Science, Exploration and Data Science. At the October Ed Ops Meeting, Deb Foster presented new course requests in high school mathematics. I'm seeking a motion to approve the Exploring Computer Science as a course offering, beginning with the 2024-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda pertaining to course approval. I'm seeking a motion to approve the Explorations of Data Science as a course offering, beginning with the 2024-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, I will make a mention as I asked the question at the last meeting. These two courses will be offered at Wausau West High School, but it's not going to be offered at Wausau East due to the fact that there are no teachers at Wausau East supposedly that could not teach this class. And if that does change, I would hope that we would then have that course offered at Wausau East as well. Agenda Item Eight-D, Student Fee Request for the 24-25 school year. At the Ed Ops Meeting, Deb Foster presented the suggested 2024-25 student fees. I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2024-25 student fees as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Eight-E, Health Insurance Update. At the Ed Ops Meeting, Josh Rigut shared with the Board a presentation on the recommended health insurance update. John Priest from M3 Insurance was available for the questions. I'm seeking a motion to accept the presented health insurance plan, design, changes effective January 1st, 2024.
So moved. Side out.
Questions?
Jim, I've got one question that I guess I would just like for the Board to consider. So I think what we agreed upon, I don't know where Josh is, was to implement the premium increase on January 1st, correct? That's what...
The plan changes.
The plan changes, which would be the deductibles and everything else going up. And when I thought about that, that is right in the middle of contracts for staff. So when people sign their contract effective July 1, they do so under the assumption that their health plan, deductibles out of pockets and everything are at one level, and I don't know if the premiums change or not, but I don't know, in fact, I don't think that it is a good practice to increase that midway through a contract, because some people may base their decision, like, if I would have known that, I never would have signed my contract. I would have gone somewhere else. So I would, I guess I would ask the Board to consider delaying those plan changes until July 1, which I think would be equitable and allow folks to consider that in their contract.
Do we have an answer to the question? Go ahead, John.
Good point. I'm John Croce with M3 Insurance. I had just a quick comment about it. While I completely would concur, it's really not our place to talk about contractually what makes sense and doesn't. That's entirely up to the Board and the district. I just want to make sure from an insurance perspective, what we're talking about makes sense to everyone, because deductibles start over on January 1st. So to switch a deductible mid-year in July doesn't make sense typically, because then employees get hit with, if you're going to have to increase a deductible mid-year. The second thing is, we don't have a choice on at least one of the plans per federal law. The federal law indicates that you have to have a $1,600 minimum deductible on January 1st, 2024. That $100 deductible change meant that at least two plans of the three had to change by $100 for single and $200 for family. As a result of the shortfall, you know, we're running pretty tough loss ratio, we thought it might be a good time to look at making changes. So I just wanted to comment on that as you make your decision. Any questions about that?
Are the employee contributions going up?
They're going down, actually, as a result of the changes, yeah.
Okay. And under that configuration, if deductibles are going to reset, which they do on January 1, under the existing plan, if a deductible is $1,600, I could meet that in January, but if that deductible now goes up to $2,000, I'm still out more money because of that deductible increase before my contract would end.
Understood.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm...
Yeah, no, you're understanding correctly. I mean, the thing is, on January 1st, your deductible starts over every year.
Right.
But you're right, if you increased it that high, it's not being increased by that much. It's being increased by $100 for single and $200 for family.
Well, like I said, I was just thinking to see if anyone else thought that that was worthy of postponing those changes until July 1. I, like I said, I've never in 27 years seen that mid-contract, so if there's no appetite for it, there isn't, maybe it's making much out of nothing, but I just thought it would be fair to the staff to at least consider that.
I agree with what you're saying, yeah, but did I hear you say he would be out of compliance?
He would be out of compliance for two plans out of the three if he voted no, not to make the change on the deductible.
And what would that mean if we're out of compliance?
That means that employees could be taxed on the money in their health savings account that they previously had waived as a result of federal law. So when employees put money in their health savings account, they don't pay a tax on it. When you put money in for them, they don't pay a tax on it. That changes if they're out of compliance. It actually penalizes them.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
I just want to say, John, that it's only the deductible which is mandated.
That's correct. That is absolutely true.
100% transparent.
No, thank you for that. The other changes that are made to the plan, like I said, we said it made sense to also, as long as we're making a change, you might as well do them all at once, but again, outside of the contract, I understand, or contractual year, I understand what you're saying. But thank you for that, Josh.
Any other follow-up questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Eight-F, Mr. McKee will share his proposal with the Board and Administration.
Thank you.
Grab that mic and pull it close, Pat, so we people that have hearing aids need to really hear.
All right, is that better?
Better.
Better?
All right.
Okay, thank you, Jim, and I said 15 minutes, so I want to do my best to keep this to 15 minutes. So before I get started, I just want to say that this particular plan is simply a culmination of feedback that I've gotten from staff, from the community, frankly, from Board members, students, 12 years being on the Board, and ideas that have come out of the last eight months of work. And speaking of the last eight months of work, I don't want it to come across, I don't want this plan to come across, that it disregards the discussion or the analysis that's been done regarding the combining of the high schools. I think that that discussion needed to happen. We needed to surface what the benefits potentially are, and probably more importantly, we needed to surface what the challenges are. I think that that has happened. I think we're still continuing to surface those. But as I said, if the analysis had not happened, I think there would always be a question, well, what if, what if, what if? And I'm speaking mostly to this from, well, I'm speaking all of this from the academic side. I'm not getting into athletics. I know that there's a lot of discussion around the community about, you know, why this is happening and particular benefits to athletics. I don't have any facts to support that, so I'm just going to leave that one alone. The curriculum work that has been done the last eight months is absolutely not throwaway work. This can be applied to any alternative plan that has a goal of improving course parity and consistency. We can build a plan that has clearly defined goals, stakeholders, outcomes, accountability, and can be measured and reported on on a consistent basis. The plan can be designed to accomplish the same goals and more without destroying, but rather improving the community's trust and confidence in the district. The community understands we need to do something specifically on elementary cost structure and provide more consistent access to high school course offerings. However, and this is from my Board member, Mr. Nicolai, there's a reason you don't do surgery with a machete. You do it with a scalpel. And I guess I would like us to consider an alternative plan under a more scalpel framework rather than taking a machete to the district. First of all, Slide One, Strategic Plan Objectives. And I want to reiterate, and I've gotten questions about this, you know, over the weekend. These are examples only. The Board has not discussed anything. The Board has not approved anything. These are just simply my first draft attempt at what's in my head, based on what I've seen and heard about goals and objectives that made sense to me, absolutely not final, not intended to be final or anything of, you know, of the imagination like that. But, you know, as you can see, providing consistent, high-quality course offerings, providing environments and support systems for our staff to operate at the top of their license, providing environments in which all of our staff have authority and expectation to influence the culture, engagement, trust, accountability, and student and parent-first mindset, providing parents with confidence that their kids are going to receive the highest quality education regardless of where they live, and, last but not least, providing taxpayers with a transparent and fiscally responsible financial oversight that clearly shows how any requested investments will be spent along with expected value and/or return of those investments. As I said, not final, not intended to be final whatsoever. Next slide, same thing. These are just examples of goals that I believe are, forget about the starting values and goal targets, this is just for illustrative purposes, but I believe that at least the majority of those goals are what is intended to come out of the current plan. I can't say for certain, because I try to be very objective and very definitive with what goals are, so we could actually measure and track progress towards each of those. But as you can see, if, think of this in terms of, if we accomplish these goals, do we meet our strategic objectives? Those should play hand in hand, and you should be able to measure your goals and measure your progress towards them, thus being able to assess how you're doing on your strategy. Okay? The other key point on this, goals are not solutions. Okay? That is a fundamental paradigm shift that I think is part of the issue, the biggest issue that people have with this current plan. The goal is not to combine high schools. The goal is to offer course parity and consistency for our high school students and to provide a more consistent experience for staff. Okay? The goal is not to close elementary schools. The goal is to provide a reduced cost structure for what we spend on elementary education. Somehow, those objectives got wrapped into being the goal and the solution. And that's where I think this plan went astray early on, and it's only continued to gain momentum. And I think we've all seen what has happened with that momentum, is that as it's moved, it's continually driven more and more discourse because people are seeing this, wait a minute, that's the goal, that's the solution, you never looked at anything else. Okay? If you separate those two, you can come up with much more financially responsible solutions as well as creative ones that are going to get the buy-in and support of the community. Okay, next slide, please. These are simply staffing models. One of the big things that we've been talking about, as I mentioned, I assume that this is for elementary staffing, okay? We're not going to get staffing plans under the current plan until '24, maybe it's the spring of '25. There's no reason why we can't go through an assessment, this should take a couple, this could take a couple of days to put together for all of our elementary schools. With a few clicks, you can quickly understand which school is the most efficient, which school is the most expensive, what ratios do we have in class size, what ratios do we have in paraprofessionals, how are we looking with our gifted and talented support, any and everything. We can make assessments, and then we can compare and make intelligent, fact-based decisions about what we want to do going forward, back to the goal of improving the cost structure. Okay? That may mean closing schools, that may mean combining some schools, it may mean something completely different. The objective that we would sign up for is to reduce the cost structure. This could be one solution. Okay? The next model would be School B. The next, can you go to the next slide? Yeah, School B, it's the same thing, okay? And this really just builds toward, the next slide would be, if you're thinking about combining two schools, you'd add them together. Here's the enrollment, here's the staffing, here's the classroom staffing, here's administrative staffing, operating expense, simply just a culmination of both of those schools now coming together. That's your cost today to run those two schools. Next slide. Okay, this would be, if you merge two schools, what is requested for staffing and operating expenses? What do you want your class sizes to be? What's the goal? For every class to be at 90% of district guidelines? For every class to be at 100% of district guidelines? What's the ratio of paraprofessionals that you want to have in this new merged school? How many administrators? How many admin support, food service, building and grounds, utilities, right, operating expense? This makes up 90% of the cost of a building. If you get these numbers, you can make intelligent decisions about what you want to do in terms of mergers. Okay? This is what people would request. Think of everything in white as user input, everything in blue is auto-calculated. This is where you can mix and match and play around and say, oh, we're going to do good here in 4th grade, but we're not going to do, you know, as well here in 3rd grade. What are we going to do about that? How does it impact our cost model? Next slide. So this would be, if you take that previous slide, here's what the user's input, base that and compare that to what the total combined is today, this is your delta, this is your annual impact to the model. And it's both a cost impact as well as class size impact, paraprofessional ratio impact, and most importantly, down on the right, we should be measuring things as in cost per student. Okay? Don't think of that as putting a price on a student's head, that's simply saying, how much are we expending to educate all the students in that school at whatever level we happen to be talking about? If you do that, and you can come up with, here's your staff savings, here's your annual operating expense savings, here's your grand total, oh, in order to make School B compatible so we can move School A into it, we have to spend $4 million, okay? At that, the impact of that, we would have to add $50,000, this is made up, again, we'd add $50,000, but we'd be closing another school that has $25,000, so we would have a net reduction of 25,000 square feet, and we could return this investment to the taxpayers in 5.2 years. That's something that we can sign up for, that's a goal, that's an objective. That's all this is, is a framework for which we could use as a foundation to go forward in a different way. All right, so having said all that, if you could go to the next slide, please. This would be an example of goal status. This is what the board and the public should be seeing on a regular basis. Whatever goals we had agreed upon from the earlier slides, here's our target dates, here's the next board action that would be needed, here's a status. You can see the status indicators down below. Is it complete? Is it not started? Is it in progress? Is there a risk? Or is there going to be a significant risk in not being able to meet that particular goal, budget-wise or target-date-wise? Again, just a more, not a more, frankly, an objective way to keep everybody accountable and to keep everybody on track with how the plan would be coming along. Next slide. This would be a more detailed assessment of each of the individual goals. You would be able to see key accomplishments, next steps, what are your milestones, who owns them, what's the due date, and what is the status. Again, link back to the goals. However much detail the board or the public wants to see, you can request to have in something like this. This eliminates all this back and forth about who did this, who's doing what, where is this at, well, I thought we made this decision before. This is an artifact that's created that increases the accountability for the owners of each of these particular goals. Okay, next one. So in summary, what this plan would be asking for is, first, for the current referendum projects, completely approved referendum projects, per the original intent, approved by the voters as to how the funding would be used. The exception would be to pause any work on the elementary schools that have been identified for possible action, terminate nexus contract upon completion of those current projects. And I should also mention, and I don't know how we want to do this as an addendum, but the decisions that have been made, I know we're adding a couple art rooms at Horseman, we have Montessori going to Lincoln, I don't think that we should go back on those, I think that we've already allotted the money for it, and we have voted to support that. So I would say move forward with those, with those projects as well. High schools, keep current high school structure, branding mascots, WSA East and WSA West, grades 9 through 12. Develop consistent set of course offerings and curriculum for both high schools, along with solutions and costs to deliver those courses to both schools as needed. Middle schools, keep John Mear and Horseman 6 through 8. Develop consistent course offerings and curriculum, to the extent that they're not now at the middle schools, along with solutions and costs to deliver those. Elementary schools, keep elementary schools K through 5. Assess options for bringing 4K into elementary schools where possible. That would mean enrollment variables as well as space variables, may not be possible. All I'm suggesting is that we consider that and look for that opportunity. I know that there's been discussion, well, there's all of these advantages to having 4K academies. If we could see data that would support the advantage of a 4K academy over having 4K in the elementary schools, I'm up for discussion, I think we would want to discuss that in more detail. Assess the current footprint and determine solutions for decreasing the amount of square foot currently managed by the district for traditional elementary education. Assess options for normalizing and improving ratios of teachers and students and support staff to students, paraprofessionals, gifted and talented, social workers, et cetera. Engage a third party to estimate what it would cost and associated timelines to implement the recommendations derived from A and B above. Number five, daycare, discontinue the work on the daycare plan with the YMCA. If we do end up with vacant facilities after the work that would happen in four, I think we could offer the YMCA or whoever is pushing for this, the right of first refusal to purchase a property at market price. And six, last but not least, Longfellow, assess possibility of closing Longfellow and relocating to some of the existing space in one or more of the underutilized district facilities. I know that there were some reasons given in a recent addition, I'm happy to get into some counter-arguments to those in a second, but I'm not going to now. So I am seeking a motion to approve this strategic advancement plan as presented, or you say that and then...
So you're putting a motion out there.
I'm putting a motion out there.
A second, so we can have a discussion on it.
And that's, at this point in time, we will have a discussion on it, and also would like to hear from the administration to give what you have put together so that we can balance. And what I'm hearing from what you're talking about, Pat, you're really putting some things out there that could be flexible within your motion as well, correct?
Correct.
I mean, because of the fact that we have to have more discussion. Because there's a lot of things on this one motion. Normally, we would have a motion with only one thing, but we've got about several things within this that we would have to have more discussion on.
Well, you had one motion in February that covered 72 slides. So all I'm asking for is six bullet points.
Yeah.
But I can separate them however you want to separate them.
I'm just saying, that's a part of the discussion.
Sure.
We can talk about.
Sure.
But I want to make sure you're flexible with things.
Sure, absolutely inflexible. And at the end of the day, what I think, what I don't want to get lost here and mire down in the discussion, I think that there is alignment on elementary work that needs to happen. The significant differences that I see based on this current plan versus what is supported through finance, through data and everything, is on the secondary schools. So however you want to, people want to frame the discussion, I, you know, obviously...
And that would be part of the discussion with the board, because that would be a board decision that we would go off of.
Sure.
It's not going to be any one person making those decisions. We are a board of nine, and we all have a vote. So with that, I'm going to turn it to the administration. We had the motion, we have the discussion, and then we're going to come back and have every board member make a comment as well, based on what we've heard.
I do that, right?
Yes.
I might want to speak to you, so you can keep your light.
Good evening. So I've got some really good news, and that is, everybody here cares about kids. And I want to thank Mr. McKee for sharing, you know, his analysis, his proposal. And I do want, you have that first slide, Cassie. I do want to thank Mr. Seifelt, if he's still here. Oh, that's, oh, there you are. I always like your ideas and the way you present them. I will assure you, there is no hard-heartedness in this district. Matter of fact, if you could go ahead, keep going to that, where's our timeline? My, actually, why don't you back up a couple? So we've been talking about serious problems that need some solutions for many, many years. Declining enrollments, fiscal challenges, lack of parity across our district. And I think what Mr. McKee presented tonight is a very succinct way, different language that I'm used to using, but I think we're talking about similar goals. So that's why I'm feeling really good, that we're all interested in what's best for our students. I do, I think it's important too, to know that we are, we are always open to the best ideas regardless of who presents them. You'll see, I'm not going to go through every slide on here, we did, we took a look at the proposal, and we also thought it was, you know, and to do some analysis, we also thought it was really important to go back to the beginning. When we were talking to people about, hey, we're thinking, we have these problems, we have declining enrollments, we have schools that are half-empty, resources are really tight, we are inefficient structure, we want to be able to have, we want to have a great working environment for our staff. Those were our outcomes. Those were not our solutions. When we, we started talking about possible solutions, and frankly, the solutions we're talking about with restructuring were not our original solutions. We've tried different staffing models, we've tried to improve parity across our schools, we are constantly making, trying to make the best use of our resources. So this has been an evolution. And as we were thinking about possibly consolidating, we were asking people, this is from, this is the one from 2019, there's been a few different surveys, open surveys, to all the community, to all of our staff. And in each one, there was a majority that said, you know, this is a, this idea has some merit. So if you go forward, Cassie, to the, you'll, there's 57, 65%, you can keep going. And so then, the board said, you know, let's create a subcommittee to look at some possible solutions. We purposely made it a school board subcommittee so that it was, so the meetings were posted, they were open to the public, we had some people who came. And we explored a lot of the ideas that we're talking about tonight, you know, trying to, you know, create equal high schools, trying to create one high school, a number of different solutions. So this group, and there is, there was two actually subcommittees, the secondary and the elementary, they met many times over a summer, I don't know how many hours, and they helped us develop some of the concepts that we're, that we were trying to implement tonight. So, you want to go ahead, Cassie? You can keep going. We continue to get input through the process. So I think this is important. There's about three slides that show the timeline for input and for feedback and for analysis. You can keep going. You know, so three, so this has been an ongoing conversation. And there you go. And then, yeah, as Mr. McKee mentioned, in February, the board said, yeah, let's, let's do this. And I know people wanted more analysis, and there had been a lot of planning to this point, but at the same time, I didn't want to ask our staff, who, this would be extra work for them, you know, our teachers, or everybody, to really engage in this until we knew that the board was committed. So I really appreciate the board doing this, and it has allowed us to make some decisions that we would not have made had we waited. You want to keep going? We've also, oh, sorry, back up one. Once the board took that action, you know, we continued with the planning, we met with a number of partners who have been wonderful, CISA 9 and Green Heck and OSA, and we've talked to a number of other schools as well. You can keep going. This is some of the work that is currently going on, you can keep going. All right. So, like I said, I think that what Mr. McKee developed had some, has some real merit, and I've got some logistical concerns. Before I get to that, I also want to extend to Mr. McKee, I think that some of your skills, combined with, you know, my understanding of how schools work, we could really work together to create something, and I think people would appreciate that, as opposed to some of the discord that we've had. So I would just put that out there for consideration. I think I'm just going to sum up my logistical concerns, and Mr. McKee already mentioned that some of the plans for the referendum have already been made. Next slide, Cassie. High school structure. So this is one that had a lot of, I forget which board members were on the secondary subcommittee, but the purpose of that was to create better work conditions for our staff and to create equal opportunities for students, and to make sure we make best use of our resources. You know, right now, we duplicate a lot of offerings across the river, teachers in smaller schools have more preps, the students don't have, so those were the, those were the goals we were looking for. Through all of the exploration, the best option that we came up with at the time was the one that we are currently doing. Now, if we can come up with a better solution, we're all for it. You're right, there is no reason to rush this. We set timelines to make sure that we're doing work on a predictable schedule and we can measure our progress. But there is no rush. But there is no rush, other than the fact that right now, we have inequitable opportunities for students, and that's a burning concern of ours. So, we could, which, oh, this is number two, keep the same structure. Can you go forward one? Because I just want to talk about the high schools a little bit. This is secondary curriculum, one more? Okay, let's just pause here for a minute. So, let's say we wanted two equal high schools. If we create the same course offerings at each school, students will still not have equal opportunity. Because a school who, did you, did you go past the slide that has all the high school enrollment projections? I think you did earlier, I apologize, I'm running you all over the place here. Can you go back to it? Yeah. If you have a school with 1400 or 1500 students, and you have another school that has seven or eight or 600, here we go. Actually, back up one slide. Students will not be able to take all the courses that are offered, right? So, this is, these are our past enrollments. So, this is historic enrollment for East and West, going back from 2012. You can see it's 1300 and 1000, roughly, to today, we're at 1400 and about 900. At this number, we can offer all the equal classes, but there's a, an economy of scale issue, where these children do not get the same opportunities. We don't have enough children to run those classes. That is our main issue. So, you say, okay, let's equal the enrollment. Oh, sorry, forward one more slide. This is a projection that Mr. Viggo and Mr. Uding did, based on our current enrollments and birth-to-date in our, in our, in our county. So, we just use that to project. Right about here, somewhere in this room, about 2030, Wassa West will be twice the size of East if we don't do anything. And then, it obviously continues from there. West is actually going to maintain for a while. So, those economy of scale issues will always benefit the larger school. Can you go back to that map with the, because then you say, well, why don't you just balance out the enrollments? And then, again, the, I'm sorry, I have to go back to you. The subcommittee explored this option as well. So, currently, this is the Horus Man and Wassa East enrollment zone, and from this red line, including the green, that's all John Mear and Wassa West. There would be a lot of ways to equal, you know, a lot of lines we could draw. But we just took a line from north to south, as, well, we've kind of followed the highway. This would pull, this would equal out our enrollments. This moves about 250 students or so. Basically, it's from K to the highway, or, no, K, all the way down would go to East. I put this red arrow here, because we just saw the projections, that enrollment to the West is going to continue. That's a demographic shift that's going to continue, so that line would have to continue to move. So, we can do that. Then you'd have two schools of roughly 1000, 1200, somewhere in that, in that range. And they'd be equal in number. We still have some other issues with, with teacher certifications and programming and all that. So, I'm just saying, there are some really good things that were put out tonight. There is some logistical school things, like certifications and enrollments and things that, that would need to be worked out, and I'm happy to do that, if that develops the best solution for our students. Can you go forward a little bit? I'm not sure what else I'm missing here. I thought, I don't know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but maybe just one more slide. Actually, the next few slides just help, help give us a little perspective of the difference between West and East, the opportunities that are open to our students. Do you want to go to the next one, Cassie? So, these are, which ones are these? So, there's some music differences, AP and IB, both awesome. I'd love to have them, obviously, available to both. I'm sorry, can you back up a slide? Because there's differences in all of our, sorry, forward, I'm not sure. There we go. Engineering, these are just differences between, that East have, West has, that East does not. Engineering, and web designs, and music, and other things. There's a whole list of courses that students don't have access to. There was a slide in here, and I don't know if you can find it, Cassie, but I'll tell you the story real quick. We had 17 Wassa West students this year, they wanted to take autos, advanced autos, and they tried, but the barriers did not, between scheduling conflicts, transportation, 10 of them could not do it. Those are the kinds of things, you know, that, that's, the solution is giving the kids equal opportunities. So, I don't know where that was, Cassie, that's okay. So, I'm going to wrap it up there, and say, there's some good ideas. I like the way you presented some of your goals, I like that a lot. I was talking to Tabitha a little bit about our, the staffing models. We do that, we use some different languages, you don't share with the board, because it's stuff we use internally, but we could certainly do that as well. So, I think, I'm just going to pause there, because we wanted to try to be done at six for the open house, right? I'm thinking there might be some questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And what I'm going to do is turn it over to the board, and I'd like to go around the horn here, to give everybody an opportunity to say what they have to say, starting here.
Yeah, thanks. So, great discussion. I don't support the motion that's on the table currently, because I don't support all of it, I support some of it. I don't support canceling the current restructure plan, but I also don't support going forward with it in the fall of 2025. And, you know, I think that, there's a few reasons for that, but before I do that, talk about that, I just want to address a criticism that we've received, we received it after the vote in February, and we've received it again more recently, so I think it's worth bringing up again. The criticism is based on a misconception. The criticism goes something like this, you all voted in favor of a plan before you knew all the details. The misconception that's based on is, it assumes that what, that we voted on some sort of final, fully-vetted plan, this is it, can't change it, we're moving on to something else, like double stamp, no takeback. That's not what happened. Instead, we knew we had a restructuring, we knew we had a structure problem in the district, we've known that for a long time. We brought it up to Dr. Hiltz in his first interview when he applied to be a superintendent of our district. Yeah, so, so we knew we had a problem with our structure. Administration brought to us the outline of a restructure, but as Dr. Hiltz mentioned, said, we don't want to commit the next year-plus of staff time to work on this, to find out, the board has no interest in it anyway. And so, what they asked us to approve, or not approve, is that outline of that new structure of the district, which we approved, knowing that the real work was yet to come, knowing that what was going to happen is what has been happening now, and what's continuing to happen. And, and that, that study is showing us new things, as we should expect, and so, it's kind of a message to the public that, you know, that was part of the process, but also a reminder to the board, that we said we would be open to changes if new information came up, and so, I think we need to be open to that along the way. So, the reason that I think that we should delay the restructure as opposed to cancel the restructure is, we've, we've found some challenges. I'm not confident enough in the secondary part of the restructure to say that it's going to happen for sure, and I think we need to be at that point very soon, in order to have it happen in 2025, because you have to backdate a year-plus for staffing, WIAA, it's not like we have to be sure of it, you know, in the summer of 2025. We have to be sure of it, like, in a month or two. Where I don't, I'm not going to be there. And so, I would, I think that we should delay it. So, if the vote for, if the vote that's on the table fails, I will be making a motion that we delay the restructure to the fall of 2026. It may have to get delayed again, it may totally change, it may get scrapped before then, I don't know, but I think we should allow the process that's ongoing to continue. There's a couple advantages also to the delay, and one of those is, we, one of the challenges we found is the science rooms. We can't build those science rooms by the fall of 2025. If we get to a point where that's the only roadblock, and we think that we should do it, and we're going to build those science rooms, then we could do that and have them in place for whenever the combination happens. As opposed to trying to push this forward, have it, have it happen in the fall of 2025 and not have those science rooms there, it's going to make it even harder to accomplish. Also, we've looked at the enrollment numbers for the combined schools, and what we've, what we've seen is that if we combine the schools and do the junior high, senior high model in 2025, the West building will have a very high enrollment for four years. It's actually had higher than that in the past, but still, higher than now for four years. And then, it drops off. Even combined, it drops off to be similar to what it is now. So, a delay of a year, or maybe even more, avoids one of those high enrollment years. So, I think that's another advantage to a delay. And then, also, the reason I favor a delay rather than a cancel of the plan is because I want to keep the pressure on. I don't want to, this to be another board in a long line of boards that has kicked this problem down the road, year after year after year. So, I want to keep the pressure on. My favoring of delaying the start to 2026 does not mean that I think we take a year off in the, in the planning, that goes full steam ahead. We continue to plan for it, we continue to study the curriculum and the class needs and all of that, so that we can find out any problems that exist. Are there some that are insurmountable? Are there opportunities we didn't know of? And then, at the same time, I think we look into some of the things that Pat brought up. Like Dr. Hiltz mentioned, these aren't new. We've talked about equalizing the course offerings and equalizing the schedule. We've talked about all of that before, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't talk about it again. And right now, we have staff that is working on planning of, you know, what's our best curriculum for, for a one-high school, a senior high, junior high situation? What a perfect time to also look at, what would it look like to equalize the curriculum and the scheduling at East and West? And what could we do with transportation of shuttles or something for kids to go back and forth between the schools, or whatever it might be? I think that we, we continue to look at what we've already been looking at, also look at the things that Pat brought up, but with a delay rather than a cancellation. I also think that one of the things that we should consider, not for a vote tonight, of course, but I think we should consider an elementary referendum. And the reason I say that is because I think that there is more support in the community for an elementary consolidation, if we can keep the fifth graders in the elementary buildings, than there is for the secondary consolidation. Normally, I would say, if you go to a referendum that involves closing schools, you lose. We found out, even when we tried to build a new school, we still lost. So, normally, I would say that doesn't work, but in this situation, we could, we could do the elementary work that we pulled out of the last referendum, we could add on to a few schools, so that we could consolidate without moving the fifth graders out, and we could do that and keep tax rate flat. If that passes, then, of course, the secondary restructure has to, it wouldn't go forward as it is right now, because that relies on the fifth graders moving up, so that would have to change. If that fails, okay, at least we know, it's off the table. If the community doesn't support that, then that's off the table, and that isn't one of our options. Then we know that we have to either move the fifth graders up, or we have to do massive elementary boundary changes. So, at least, at least we know. I think there's value to that referendum, whether it passes or fails, I think we know. If the community is really supportive of restructuring our elementary schools, but keeping the fifth graders together, but not supporting the secondary consolidation, they'll vote in favor of it. If they're not, they won't. So, I guess, in summary, I'll vote, I'm going to vote no to the motion that's on the table. If it, if it passes, then I will, I will join the majority of the board and move forward like we're supposed to. If it doesn't pass, then I'm going to be making a motion that we vote to delay the start of the restructure to the fall of 2026, knowing that everything else still continues forward, knowing that we might have to make changes before then, knowing that it might completely change before then.
Thank you.
I think that the restructuring plan that's currently out there was put out there to address a lot of the issues that our district faces, as far as declining enrollment, sure, and all of the things that Dr. Hiltz has, has put out there for us. However, as we've gotten further into the process, it's become clear that overwhelmingly, we have opposition from the community, which I think is extremely important, especially when we're moving forward with a project this large. And I think a lot of that is due to what's perceived as a lack of communication regarding the restructuring, and then also, the issues that have come up as we've gotten further into the process. I think it's hugely important that we have community involvement and input that establishes an equitable and agreeable restructure plan for students, families, teachers, but also providing fiscal responsibility for the taxpayers. I think Pat's plan opens the door for that, as well as greater flexibility, as we move forward and establish that future changes are needed, and continually adapting to the changing needs of the district.
Let's make sure you're close.
Thank you, Pat, for putting this together and finding the time to do so. I, I am not in favor of stopping the restructure, but I am in favor of delaying the restructure. I think we need more answers to questions that have come up during this process. I am open to changing the plan. This plan that I voted yes on wasn't set in stone, so I'm open to any changes that will happen, as the data that is presented comes to us. I am, I don't think that this plan is set in stone, and we have to do everything that... We didn't really have a set plan. We had an outline of what needed to happen as far as restructuring the schools, so I'm open to any changes that come as we get the data. I do share the concern for taking the fifth graders out of the elementary, but I know that that was what needed to happen in order to move forward with the restructure, but if that is something that we can find a way to keep the fifth graders in elementary school, I would really be in favor of that. So, I am in favor of delaying the secondary consolidation of the high schools, but I am not in favor of stopping the restructure.
I have always, since before the January 23 meeting at Wassa West, asked for details, wanted details, wanted them worked out and data to be compiled in order to find the right direction forward for this district in offering the best curriculum and class choices for our students at the lowest possible cost. Because of this, I have voted no twice on the plans as they were presented to the board. Much necessary and positive work has been done over the last eight months by the department leaders and their teaching staffs. This work has shown a better picture of where we sit as a district, and very much want to thank all of the staff and families that did do this work over the last months. But, at the same time, it's necessary for the current plan to be revised, to meet the new data we have gained. It's not necessary to work, that we sit here and work out the details of a revised plan tonight, but it is time for this board to stop what are we, what we are doing, and reassess the data, and decide on a revised direction. Pat's proposal creates a visible framework for our continued discussions.
First of all, thank you, Pat, for your work on this. I think, the first thing I want to say is, first of all, it's really important, I think, for the community to understand that there's not been just one or two board members doing endless work on this issue, and continuing to ask ongoing questions, having ongoing conversations with staff and administrators and community members. That's been going on by a lot of us daily. So, I just think that's really important, to just know that's happening. When I voted in support... When I voted in support of the restructuring plan last February, it was always with a commitment that it needed to be done with excellence and not haphazardly or in any kind of chaotic push this through kind of manner. I think people would remember that I continue to ask for this to be segmentally implemented. I'm concerned about disrupting every building all at once. So I agree absolutely with Lance when he says that we didn't have a finalized plan. We knew there was going to be some surprises or some, some information revealed along the way. That being said, I think now, in the midst of when I approved, I was really led to believe that it was possible to accomplish without taking millions of dollars from referendum money that was passed by our community. I was not going to do that. I did not do that. It's why I voted against doing that when there was asked for money to be moved for a second and third floor to West in order to support a restructure. Because I just, I find that to be a matter of my own personal integrity, and that would cause breaking trust with the community. And it's why I voted against it and why I continue to not support doing that. I was also led to believe there would be not only equal opportunities for students in a merger, but increased opportunities in doing so. What we've found because of a space issue, as we've done the, you know, scope and sequence work, is I don't see how a secondary merger can be done with excellence without increased funding. And for me, that makes it time to pause altogether with a secondary conversation and merger. We clearly need more space, science labs, parking, second, third floor, money for rebranding, all of those things, and money increased in our budget for the increased busing needs. A lot of things that have come to the table that we can't do without more money from our community, which requires a referendum. And I'm not interested in taking referendum that was previously passed for other work in order to support that. So I'm just not comfortable with that. All of these issues just kind of make me feel like that part is time to pause. I agree also with Lance, though, about the elementary conversation. That's really where my heart in all of this started, mostly because I think it's time to have a really honest conversation about what's happening financially in the state, in the nation, with regard to state funding, decreasing enrollment, in particular to Wausau, a significant demographic shift to the West side. You know, I, I've heard so many people share, you know, we came to Wausau because of, you know, we wanted small schools and, and I'm not sure that people understand, Wausau is the 13th largest school district in the state of Wisconsin. There's 421, we're the 13th largest. So this is not a small district. And I think it's important for people to understand also that larger schools, now I'm speaking in, in the midst of an elementary school, does not mean a poor academic outcome on any level. Just to give you an example, right now, the number one ranked district in the state is the Elm Brook School District. Based on the Third Friday numbers, Elm Brook School District has 50 fewer students than Wausau. It's actually number 14 largest, 50 fewer. And just to give you an estimation, Elm Brook School District, we have 13 elementary schools. Elm Brook has five. That should awaken us to the fact that we have a footprint that is absolutely not appropriate. They're still the number one performing school district. And so it's important for people to understand that a size of a school building does not make for better outcomes. It has, it's, it's about demographics, it's about staffing, and it's about responsible use of our resources in order to support our, our student needs. And if we are spread so thin because we're most concerned about our child being able to ride their bike to their elementary school, what we will see is continued decline in opportunities for all students in this district. So it's really important, and I appreciate that, I think the community really does and has embraced that there's some change that, that is to come and needs to come. Because I'm doing work with districts all over the state with my work on Wausau, and I am talking with board members from all over the state who are going to operational referendum because they can't even run their district without increased funding. So all that to say, I, I agree with most of what Pat's plan shows. I really do. But I also agree with Lance, what you're saying with regard to the need for a conversation about the elementary referendum and looking at that footprint. So I don't know how to vote on this plan because there's a couple of things just in particular in your action that I would maybe just caution us against. And one being, when you say, keep current high school structure, branding, mascots, okay. But then when you say develop consistent set of course offerings and curriculum for both high schools, I think it's important for us, I think that's a good goal, to try to reduce parity for sure, but I also think, I want to just warn us as a board, and this is based on conversations I've had with high school staff and administrators, that we need to remember, West has 550 more students than East. West is a large high school and East is a small high school, and they're continuing to do this. And so, I mean, 550 students is really the size of some high schools in the state, like just by itself. And so there are benefits that East has because it's small, and there are benefits that West has because it's large, and they're not the same benefits. And so for us to think that we're going to be able to do exactly the same at both buildings if we do not merge is not right or fair or realistic. And I think we're going to end up hindering our staff in both buildings and our students in both buildings if we say, if you can't do it at both buildings, you can't do it at all. And I think that's what we've been seeing. And so I think it's really something we need to be careful about in the work of trying to, to increase parity across the secondary building, buildings, that that's just a, a truth that we are dealing with, that there's just going to be a large size discrepancy, at least in the short term, unless we walk down a road of the boundary changes or whatever else in order to equalize those buildings. So that's just my thoughts. I don't know if I can necessarily say, you know, I, I guess I would maybe prefer with your motion that's on the table, if we could break it down a little bit, I think.
Trying to keep up with you.
Sorry. I think even the, the daycare conversation, I think is a great thing for our community, but I also think, and, and certainly very attractive to staff and incoming folks into the community. However, I think we have too much on our plate right now that we can't take this on. But to me, that doesn't mean stop the conversation altogether, it just means, nope, not right now. We need to do all of this with excellence, and that means taking a narrow focus in certain areas. So I guess that's sort of where I'm at.
I, I tend to agree with slowing things down, as Lance suggested. I agree with a lot of the points that Pat has made, and not to belabor the point, but, you know, change is never easy. But when we work through change, more often than not, we can come out of that change better off than we were before. I have four children in this district. I am not sitting up here making decisions thinking that my children are going to be hurt by, by what's being accomplished here, what's trying to be accomplished. This is a math problem. We're discussing a situation in this district that nearly all districts in the state are talking about with declining enrollment. It's a function of birth rates. It's been declining since 1980. So maybe we should all consider a, maybe a tax offering to people to start getting, you know, having more children in, in the district and we could, you know, increase our... It's, it's, it's a math problem. It's been declining since 1980. We're not Sun Prairie. We don't have people flocking to Wausau, moving here. I wish we, I wish we did. Maybe that could change. But it's, when something is a hard trend, it's not changing anytime soon. So the birth rate, people aren't flocking and moving to Wausau. Unfortunately, a lot of the students that go off to college or, you know, move somewhere, they a lot of times don't come back to start families here right away. The other hard trend is staffing. We talked about busing. Yes, it's hard to find bus drivers. It's hard to find teachers right now. We talked about, you know, at the last board meeting, an example that hit near and dear to my heart because I deal with large tech giants who are building data centers across the country and across, across the world that offer amazing job opportunities for students going forward. And that's a great opportunity for our students to achieve. I was saddened to hear that we can't necessarily offer at East because there's either not enough students that we can, you know, run the class, or that that teaching position is so specific and requires certifications that, you know, it's hard enough to find one person to staff that. And our goal here is to not just provide a good education to all students, it should be to provide the same opportunities for all of our students to succeed. And, you know, you can see there's just, there's different disparities from ones, you know, West or East. My, my wife is a lifelong Wausau resident. I'm from Michigan, so I kind of came from the outside, you know, looking in. I want the best, not just for my kids, but for all students here. I want them to have the same opportunities. And when we look at what we're trying to accomplish here and bringing forward some consolidation and some savings and helping with inefficiencies with staff and, and all of those things, we can begin to invest in things that will help benefit our students even more going forward. If we want to, you know, invest in a better science, you know, or robotics lab or whatever it is and give every kid access to it versus one side or the other, right? These are the things that we're trying to accomplish. So I hope that people who, you know, are very passionate, just like I am about many things, understand that, you know, we're not up here trying to hurt anyone or, or, you know, be vindictive with, you know, what we're talking, what we're trying to accomplish up here. I just want to add on one more thing, you know, well, also what further with staffing and labor participation in the field of education, we have fewer young people going into the field of education, so that further exacerbates, you know, trying to bring teachers into our district. And that's not, that's, that's around the state and around the country. But when we talked about larger elementary schools, I got to witness that with a few of my kids during COVID over at DC Everest where their elementaries have four sections of each grade. Those teachers can collaborate together, they can work to help the students that maybe aren't doing so well, which, you know, a couple of my children were falling into that category. And, and they came out the other side of that doing, excelling in, in math. You know, my, my daughter came forward one day and said, I want a math contest today. And I went, are you kidding me? What are you, you've never really been that, that good at math. And they were able to help support her. So there's benefits to pooling resources together, especially at that elementary level, and a better outcome is, is likely to happen as Karen has talked about with Elm Brook and, and some of these larger schools. So I would support, you know, you know, a pause or a delay so that we can kind of, we can continue to engage the community and talk about this. And I hope that's, that's what we can do. Transportation, I know that's a big topic. These are things that we can work through and, and continue to, to talk about and plan for.
Courtney, go ahead.
It's always kind of hard being last because a lot of the same comments.
Well, you're not last, by the way.
I mean, on the end, on the end. I mean, a lot of the same comments have already been made. First of all, Lance, thank you. I agree with what you had to say, probably majority of what everyone had to say up here. I, I think you're right. I agree with the elementary side of things that you were suggesting. I also agree with delaying this process. Pat, I want to thank you, the work you put in. I mean, it was phenomenal. I like, I like your ideas of these goals and these, and, and you really brought that back to the forefront, that the reason why we're doing this is because of goals, not, not how we're going to accomplish them. And that's the process we're trying to work through. How do we accomplish them in the best way? I also want to say this is a very emotional issue. I think the whole community will agree with that. And I think one nice thing about this, I've seen more engagement over this issue than I have in my three years on, well, it'll be three years this year on this board. And that I think is great because we need community involvement. You need to show interest. It's, it's too bad it only happens on these bigger issues, but it's nice having that community support and that community involvement kind of giving us ideas. What we've asked for ever since we started this restructure, we've asked for community ideas going forward. And I think that's what we want to hear and we want to see, and we're grateful for it. I don't have much more to really say other than I agree with what Lance said and Pat. I liked a lot of your comments that you made in your proposal, but I couldn't support what we have on the table right now. I would be more in favor of delaying it. And like Lance said, is it going to be 26, 27, 27, 28? It doesn't matter. It brought out many great things that we needed to know, such as the science labs at West. We already needed more. I didn't know that. But going through this process brought out the fact that we needed more space there with certain aspects of our curriculum. That was needed even before this referendum. And so it's bringing out things that we need to address, and it's things that I had no idea about. I think a lot of the board members didn't have any idea about. So it still is a good process that we're going through. And I, I favor delay and continue to work through these things in coordination as a group and with community support involvement, so.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank everyone for putting their information out there and Pat, for what you put together. And it's a lot of work. You put a lot of work in there. I'm going to make my, my last comment, and then Pat, if you have something to add.
Sure.
I can see, I read body language, and I can tell you have something that you want to make a comment about. But first of all, I'm the old guy here. And so I go back a few years, taking a look at how things have changed in the Wausau School District. I came to Wausau to teach in, in Wausau and to coach in Wausau. I wanted to be in Wausau. For several years before, when I was teaching and coaching, I said, that's where I want to raise my children. We ended up raising our children, and we definitely were very pleased with the education that we received for them. They went down very successful. One's a lawyer, one's a graphic artist, and the other one's an officer in the Army. So when I take a look at the three and what they have done, that's what the Wausau School District has done for them. And as a parent, I'm very happy for what they have succeeded. As a teacher and coach in this district, I was honored to be in this district. It was a great district to be in. It is a great district to be in. And I wish we could get that message out to more young people to understand that education is where it all begins, and we need more people going into education. But with the things that are going on, I have focused on two items. And really, nobody knows where I stand on any of this, and it's for a purpose, because I want to listen to the community. Because when a couple of things happened when I was here, they were going to do some busing. They were going to bus my kids from the John Marshall area up to the Franklin area. And I said, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. So I understand the other side of all of this. But we are in a position where we have some problems that we're going to have to solve. And I'm focusing on the economics and the academics. I want our students, because I've been in other school districts, I've been an administrator in other school districts, I've been a teacher in other school districts, I know what's going on in education, and I'm subbing right now in other school districts. So I'm continuing to be in those positions. And we have a tough situation here because of the fact that our numbers are going down. It's been stated as statewide. I'm also the Wisconsin Association School Director, Wausau, what, say that again, I jumped ahead of myself, Wisconsin Association of School Boards. I'm the director for Region Five. So I'm hearing from a lot of people from around the state about what's going on there as well. They're struggling. Northern Wisconsin, above 29, you can't get teachers up there unless you're paying them a lot of money. That's a cost factor. So when you start talking about economics, salaries are going up, competitive salaries are going up. Green Bay's taking teachers from O'Connell, crivets. We're taking teachers from around the area in the smaller school districts. They're feeling it, and I'm seeing that for them. So the economics are there, people, and I'm concerned for us. Being on now a fixed income, I'm also taking a look at what are my taxes going to be? So I'm looking at it from a completely different point of view than some of the younger people on the board here because they have students in the district. But again, my background's in curriculum. I want to make sure that every student, whether you have an IEP, or you're an IB, or you're an AP, or you want to be in CTE, and I can give you all the acronyms, but if you want to be a student that wants choices, the 16 career clusters, the 72 pathways to get to those... to get to those career clusters, if you want to have those students have those opportunities, then they have to have the choices. And I'm fearful if we continue, and again, we got to look at consolidation because the money's not going to be there. It's going to be taxed on you eventually. And we're not getting a big boost from the state. So it's going to be local area. So we got to be aware of that. Curriculum, that's what I'm focusing on. And I think by looking at the consolidation, made, made mention over here with the PLCs, professional learning communities for teachers to work together so that they can work with more students with a diverse situation so that they're not stuck with 30 in their class, 27 in their class, but because they have four, four classes, they can spread the students out in those classes. And again, I'm not, I can't talk professionally from that. I've never been at the elementary level. I just gave them a lot of glory for, because they got them prepared for me at the high school. And so I look at it from a different point of view. It's a tough place to be. So with that being said, we need to stay focused on the curriculum. We need to stay focused on what's going to save us money. And with that, it's an honor to be on the school board in Wausau. And I thank you for giving me that opportunity. And with that, Pat, I'm going to turn it over to you for some final comments.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Just a, a few follow ups based on some of the, the things that were said. And then I will address the motion too, based on the feedback. First of all, I, I want to make sure that we also look not too far back in history to the pandemic. There was a significant amount of pushback in the community when we kept the schools closed and other schools were opening. Continually, we heard from people voicing concerns, you're not listening to the community, you're not listening to the people, you're not listening to the majority of folks that want their kids in school. This is one of, this is the exact same scenario on steroids. Because back then, I can say that the emails that we received, there was, I don't want to say it was 50/50, but there was many emails in support of both positions. The feedback that we're getting from the community on this, as evidenced by the 17.6% approval rate on the survey, is that they don't want specifically the secondary schools. That's the concern. Okay? If the community doesn't support this, right, they're our customers. Good, bad, or otherwise, they're our customers. Okay? We saw what happened when we did this with COVID. We lost 400 students. Many of you came and very eloquently spoke to the board about not listening to the community. I don't want us to make that same mistake again, specifically on the secondary schools. Today, we received, and this just goes to the discussions about equity of the, the courses between the schools. We received something from the Department Chair of Business and Marketing at West. It has come to our attention that you will be talking about inequities between business and marketing at East and West. We are caught off guard that this topic continually is discussed without any communication with us to help understand our historically different programs and offerings. If we were serious about offering equitable programs, business as an example, how could we not have sat down with the department head from Wausau West and said, hey, we want to offer similar courses at Wausau East? What do you think? Got another call. I got a phone call from a 35-year former teacher in the district today. I got a call and a former coach. And I quote, "This plan is horrendous for kids. We combined Horseman and John Meere and saw a 25% decrease in participation in sports and other activities." Why? Because the marginalized students didn't have the means to consistently attend things that are on the other side of the city. If the board continues with this current plan, I, as someone who spent three and a half decades in public education, will never support another referendum. Many, many others feel the same." That took me by, I guess not by surprise, the, the passion at which he was saying that was significant. Staff support, page 12 and 13 of the latest edition. Staff support was 48.4%. We're confident or very confident that restructuring would improve working and learning environments. A subsequent survey after administration had a chance to answer staff questions and concerns, 47.9% were confident. So after the opportunity to answer the questions and concerns of the staff, their confidence level went down. Community support, I just talked about it. 17.6% were confident or very confident after the 26th, the November 16th and December 7th, 2022 input sessions. Not at all confident, 62%. The financial challenges. I mentioned in the last meeting, under this current plan, fund balance will decrease 73% over the next five years, under the current numbers. In the past five years, under our existing model of our high schools and middle schools, fund balance has increased 16%, $4.6 million. So if this is such a financially devastating model that we have, I don't know how we can improve fund balance for five years straight and look forward to 10 years and decreasing it 73%. Curriculum. How many courses are available at East and West combined? Dr. Hills?
I don't know.
183. How many variances are there?
I don't know.
51. 12 business, 10 gym, six tech ed, and there's six A P I B. The additional staffing cost to offer those courses, even at a lower enrollment, will not approach the cost for additional transportation. Staffing, talking about economies of scale. Overall, the staffing model that's in this pro forma says that there's going to be 11 fewer teachers and the projected annual savings is 2.2 million in five years. Senior high is going to increase by 28 teachers. I, I don't know where they're all going to go. We know we don't have science, room for science at West. Where's the other 23 teachers going to teach? I think that's what some folks have alluded to, that there's other things happening here. West has 110 teachers, 1,400 students, a 1 to 13 ratio. East has 75 student, 75 teachers, 896 students, a 1 to 12 ratio. The new model's going to have 138 teachers in the senior high with 1,763 students, a 1 to 13 ratio. I fail to see the economies of scale when the ratios remain exactly the same. The other thing that we haven't talked about is with our decreasing enrollment, and this will be my final comment, President Boucher, is administrative staffing. If you look at Wausau, according to the DPI, Wausau is at a 1 to 208 administrator to student ratio, 38% higher than our neighbors at D C Everest in Stevens Point. If we went at the median, which would be 1 to 240, we could save six administrator positions, which would be equivalent, according to the, the salaries, about $600,000. That would fund nine additional teachers. Those are the types of solutions that I think we should be considering and looking at secondary restructuring rather than sending people back and forth across the river. Now, having said that, I, to your point, Jim, about compromise, not compromise, but flexibility on the motion, I would offer to amend the motion and include, is that something I can do now? Do you want me to do it now?
You may, you may. And we have a vote on the, again.
Okay. So I, I would propose that we, the motion would only include high schools, keeping the current structure, branding and mascots with Wausau East and West both being 9 to 12. Middle schools, keep John Meere and Horseman, 6 through 8. Elementary schools, keeping our elementary schools at K through 5 and continuing the assessment of the, the footprint to determine solutions for decreasing the amount of square footage that the district is managing for elementary education. I would remove the other parts of the motion.
Jesse, did you get that down?
Did he ask her down? That would be easier.
I'll, I can get it to you.
If they, if they both agreed to the friendly amendment, we don't need to vote on it, do we? Person who made the amendment and the person who seconded both agreed to the friendly amendment, we don't have to vote.
Well, let me think here.
Well, we can if you want to.
I mean, by the rules, we would always take the amendment, whether it's an amendment based on the person who gave the motion to begin with, and now he's creating an amendment, you would have to go through that whole process as well, preferably. So we would vote on the amendment at this point in time. So you want to read it off again?
Sure.
Then that would be the motion and then we'll need a second.
Sure. The, the amendment would be to include only high schools, keeping the current structure, Wausau West and East at grades nine through 12. Middle schools, keeping John Meere and Horseman, 6 through 8. Elementary schools, keeping elementary schools K through 5, but continuing the, the analysis on the footprint to determine solutions for decreasing the amount of space that we are currently using for elementary education.
Can I get some question about that? If we're continuing with this, is that a motion to say we're going to get a task force that's external that says, look at traffic patterns, we're going to look at enrollment, we're going to look at, you know, building, usage and maintenance? Like, what does that assessment look like? Because I want that to be.
I agree.
A very proactive conversation.
I think it, and it includes everything you just said. And you're right, because we need assessments like that. We, we already got a letter from the Village of Red Mountain concerned about the safety issues at South Mountain. So we should be looking at those things.
Second? So we have a second in that motion? There was nothing else added to that due to your conversation right there?
No.
Okay. So questions?
So this vote would be only whether we want to amend the original motion? And then we will have to have a vote on the original motion, either amended or as it originally stood?
Any other questions? This is on the amendment. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries with the amendment. Right now, going back to the motion that is on the table, we're still in question.
So this, so this motion, I just want to, because I'm voting no on it, but I just want to make sure that it's clear why. I don't oppose anything that Pat has suggested, other than taking elementary consolidation completely off the table. I'm certainly more pessimistic, I'm more pessimistic about it than I was a few months ago. I don't know if it's going to happen, but I think that we should allow that process of studying it to continue and to be completed at the same time as looking at alternatives and then decide what's the best, rather than saying it's without a doubt off the table.
Do you mean secondary off the table instead of elementary?
Oh, yeah. I, I, yeah, I'm sorry. Second, secondary. I, I don't, yeah, that would have made no sense because Pat didn't take elementary off the table. So, yeah, I don't support taking secondary off, off the table. I don't know if it's going to happen. If we can find a better option before that happens, great. Anything better is, is, is good. I'm happy if that happens. I just don't want to take it off the table. I, I don't want to do what we're actually being criticized of doing, which is to make a final decision on something before the process has gone through. So the process right now is ongoing, the study of the junior high, senior high model. I think we should allow that to continue while also looking at alternatives that Pat has brought up. So I don't oppose anything in, that Pat wants to look into, only, only the decision to completely take the secondary restructure off the table.
And I agree. I mean, that's the only reason why I would vote no on this is because it takes off the possibility off the table. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen. I don't know, but I want to see the process play out longer. I want to see more information before going there. So I kind of agree with what Lance has to say. I, I, I totally agree with what you're saying 100%. And maybe that will be the final outcome. I just, I, I'm not ready to take that other, the consolidation off the table yet. That, that's my only issue.
And there are no other solutions being looked at right now. That's what was approved.
I, I understand. I think we need to. I think we need to expand that completely. And I think we need to attack our administration as well as what we've all done to continue to look at these alternatives. And, and I think that taking one thing off the table is, is just too early in the process. I think delaying till final vote, you know, and I, I think delaying the 25, 26, 27, 28, like I said earlier, that, that, that's definitely a possi, what I would see going forward. And I think Lance said he would bring, make a motion to do that, and I would agree with that.
And all I'm suggesting is that this board make a definitive statement that we heard the community loud and clear that the secondary consolidation is not going to be an acceptable option. I'm not suggesting don't pursue the course equity and everything. I only remove that because of Karen's concerns, which were valid. So my, my point is continue figuring out how to improve that consistency and parity, but just do it under the guise of we're not going to combine the schools.
The reason I'm comfortable actually with taking the secondary merger off the table is because I think our focus needs to be singularly focused with regard to the elementary piece. I, I think that also the conversation will continue with making, you know, better parity between the secondary. That is part of Pat's intent, and I think that continues, needs to continue to happen. But I think if we right-size our elementary footprint, the cost savings that we will find in this district will potentially solve a lot of our parity issues at our secondary level because of our increased available financial resources. And so I want to look at one piece at a time. And I don't think we can, I think if we do nothing at the secondary level, we're going to have this conversation again in a few years, without a doubt, because there will become a critical mass issue in our buildings. They will not be sustainable. And that's not healthy for this district. That's not healthy for this community when you don't have good use of your resources. So I am comfortable with removing that piece because I want to singularly focus in one area, continue the conversation with regard to curriculum, but looking very specifically at our footprint and financial use, resources, et cetera, staffing wise and otherwise, in order to, you know, do this right and with excellence. And I think that, you know, just another side note, when we have larger schools, it doesn't mean larger classrooms. And I think that that's sometimes a really misunderstanding. Actually, it means better use of resources and potentially because of saved resources, smaller classrooms and better teacher to student ratios. And, and, you know, learning that's happening, that's more specific and staffs that can engage with one another. And I think all of that is best for students. And just a final comment. I just want to really thank the staff and the administration who have done so much work. I don't want anyone to feel like this has been wasted time. It's been critical and important to reveal what we've, what we've come to. That's what's important. And I think everyone here can say, we're here because we want what's best for kids and best for our staff and for a future, sustainable Wausau School District. And so I appreciate the work that is done and the more clear goals and ability to evaluate if we've met those goals. So that's all.
Corey, you have something to add there?
I just have a question. The point, Lance, aren't we, we're voting on the original, um, original motion as amended?
As amended, correct?
Yeah, yes. And, yeah, and the original motion as amended would take restructuring of the secondary schools off the table.
It takes, to be clear, it takes combining of secondary schools off the table. In terms of courses and everything else, that's still on?
It takes the junior high, senior high model off the table.
Yes.
And I appreciate Lance, what you had pointed out. And I'm just a little concerned about the things that, Pat, you want to take off the table because the comment that Lance made earlier, there have been previous boards that have knocked the can down the road when it came to consolidating before. Now, some people have said that they've never heard any discussion about that, but I will tell you, from the time that I was here teaching and coaching, coaches got together many times and talked about what would it be like to combine the two schools? and talked about, what would it be like to combine the two schools? Oh, by the way, what happened before 1970? That was a tough decision, to split WSA High School into two high schools. They were still talking negatively about that 15 years later, when I first got here. I'm talking about the old timers, and I won't mention their name, because some of you would recognize them, but I remember some of the conversations that we had. So the discussion of consolidating eventually has always been talked about, but now, as we take a look at the numbers of students in our district, at one time, we were around 10,000 students in this district. Right now, with the last count, we're under eight, and projected down the road in another 10 years, we could be under 7,000 students in this district. So to take something off the table and not take a look at it in a couple of years, maybe the elementary level does take care of a lot of this, and we won't have to deal with the consolidation. But let's also remember, 1969, 68, opening up for 1970 in WSA West, they put a lot of work into flex mod scheduling, which was a very popular, new way of scheduling in the late 60s and into the 70s. The building was built, WSA did it correctly. WSA did it correctly. They built the building based on how they were going to approach the scheduling for students in that flex mod schedule process. A lot of schools throughout the state, and I've been a part of a couple of those, went away from the flex mod, and then they had to redo the, the whole structure of the building inside. People will swear by the flex mod scheduling on the west side. I'm getting to that point. On the east side, being an east teacher, I wanted nothing to do with mod scheduling. I wanted nothing to do with it, but I didn't understand it at that time either. I think it's going to be very difficult when we talk about two high schools, because they were created to be unique in themselves, not to be the same. That's where the competition started academically, with IB and AP back at the beginning. And then when you start talking about the other aspect, which is kind of irrelevant when you talk about academics, the athletics, it was kind of irrelevant. But it was competitive with academics, the arts, and athletics. They're two unique schools. To bring them together now, to keep them on other sides, away from one another, and then try to get everything equal when it comes to curricula, it's going to be difficult. Now, I understand what you said, because I saw that same email from the business department head. You know, yeah, there should be communication happening with the department heads and identifying what's going on and, and using them as comparatives. But right now, I'm a little concerned about taking that off the table completely, because maybe in three years, we don't have to look at it. But maybe in three years, we do have to look at it, and it's the way to look. So, I'm leaning with what you're saying, Lance. Just, I'm showing my hand right now. I'm showing my hand, in fact, that I hate to cut anything off that might be something that the community would want down the road.
Jim, I guess my, my point is, is that if we don't remove the solution of combining high schools as the way to improve parity of experience for students and staff, this is going to continue to hang over the community. We've already seen examples of people leaving the district. Why do we want to cause more anxiety and drive more people away, by the way, to voucher schools, which I know upsets this board and the community altogether? Why give them a reason to leave if we are 90% sure that this combining of high schools is not going to be logistically, operationally, or financially sustainable?
Why wouldn't it be financially sustainable?
I went over that in the last meeting. I'm happy to go over the numbers again.
That's not...
I don't want to belabor the point. It's, it's crystal clear, and we saw nothing in the rebuttal today in the manifesto that disputed any of those numbers. It's not financial...
By the way, this is good, this is good discussion, people, and I hope you're all appreciating, because this is discussion that we've all wanted to have, but we've kind of just sat on it, because we weren't quite sure where to go with it as a board, because information comes to us.
And I, again, I don't disagree with trying to, to homogenize that experience. I completely get that. All I'm saying is that this particular solution is tearing the community apart. They don't want it. Period, end of story. So if we take that away, we at least allow people to breathe and approach it as a more calm, level-headed, hopefully common sense-oriented approach. Because we jumped to this as the solution. I'm saying, take it off...
And I think if we, and I think if we delay it, so that it's to 2026, three years from now, and make a commitment to looking into these alternatives, I think we're accomplishing what you're, what you're suggesting. You mentioned the, you mentioned Stevens Point and D.C. Everest, schools with a better administrative to teacher ratio. Are those schools, aren't those districts that have junior high, senior high models? You mentioned D.C. Everest. If we had the same size elementary schools as D.C. Everest, as D.C. Everest, we'd have nine, not 13. So, I, I understand what you're saying, and as I said before, I'm not, I'm not all that optimistic of, of the junior high, senior high model being our end choice, given some of the challenges that have arisen. But I think we let that plan and process continue while we also look at these alternatives, and then we see what the best option is when we get through it all.
What does your plan do when East sits 50% underutilized? What are we going to do when a building is sitting, a very nice, expensive building is sitting half-empty? I mean, are we going to, I mean, we'll have to consider possibly taking Horseman, because they'll be sitting at roughly the same amount of students, and combining those two at the time, or, you know. Having a building of that size, 50% underutilized, is a very terrible thing. It's a disservice to taxpayers, and obviously, the disparities that take place within that school will continue to be exacerbated, and we can sit and pretend all we want, that we'll bus them this way and that way, and give them the opportunities, or they can do it virtually, which we all saw how that went. You know, I, I believe in virtual in certain circumstances, but, you know, and I'm not saying, I, I agree that continuing to talk about this civilly and, and knowing that we're up against a lot of, you know, hard trends and big issues, and let's, let's continue the conversation as Lance, you know, I think is suggesting. I guess I'm just wondering, what do you do in a building sitting 50%?
What other options have been looked at? Move Longfellow into it.
Yeah, that was going to be, there was discussion about that.
Longfellow is 40 people.
Okay, that's a whole building gone.
WSA East is a school that should house, what, 13, 14, 1300, 1200?
What's the goal? To maximize, to, you want to populate East to 100% capacity? Unless that is the goal, let's find solutions for that. I have no problem with that.
Here's the thing, I completely agree with you. There's, but what we need to do is, let's chunk away at this, one step at a time, and I don't think that it benefits anyone in our community, and you and I both know what it feels like to feel unheard, and it doesn't benefit our community to leave it out there hanging, or our staff for that matter, who I know we've lost, staff members, outstanding staff members, because of the limbo. And I'm not interested in continuing with a, well, it might happen, it might not happen. Like, let's focus on what we know we can do and do it successfully first. Get that accomplished, see what that is really strategic, move forward, and then, if, if we find in that place, and we're still working on parity, we're still working on those other pieces, and if we find, as I'm sure we're going to find, there is continued changing West demographic shift, there's another conversation to have. But that's not the conversation to have right now, and it's not something that can be done without more funding successfully from the community, so we have to go to referendum anyways, right? So then, that's a decision that the community makes. So I, I think there's a benefit to saying, it's off the table. We're not talking about that piece. We're going to continue to do as best we can to provide parity between these buildings. Let's look at our footprint, elementary, it's clearly out of control. When we look across the state at the successful districts that are managing their financial resources effectively, we know it's wrong, and we need a task force to really be honest and take emotions out and say, what do we need to do? What's appropriate? And then, based on what we, what we achieve in doing that right, which I think is going to be a lot of savings for our district, we can accomplish a lot of good things, which is what we want to do. Add more programming, add more opportunities, you know, like, allow businesses to do different things in our building. So I, I just think that there's a benefit to saying, enough, everybody exhale, you're being heard, we care about that, and we, we don't want to lose more people just because of the limbo.
Well said. Jennifer, you had something to add?
I was just going to make the comment about the Longfellow building, and if Horseman or East is underutilized, moving administration to one of those buildings.
And those are discussions that could be done down the road. Wouldn't have to be on this. Okay. Any final comments? If not, all in favor? We're still, okay, we're, we're still on your motion. We were in discussion point, and now we're at the voting.
On the amendment?
No, that's done. That's, the amendment's been done.
Right, on the amended motion, is what I mean. Yeah, okay.
We're on the amended motion. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So, with that, I would like to have a roll call. Agreed.
John Fisher?
Yes.
Kevin P?
Yes.
Go ahead, Clive?
No.
Member Taylor?
Yes.
Do I have a guess?
No.
Curtis Sellers?
Yes.
Man Stroll?
No.
Karen Bamber?
Yes.
So we have a 5-4 vote to pass the motion. The motion passes. With that being said, not to cut your applause off, but it is getting late, and there is a reception out there that we'll be able to go to. But I'd like to finish our meeting with our agenda items. That was agenda item nine, excuse me, eight, agenda item nine. Let me see, we have Board Member, Professional Growth Development Report. Anyone have anything else to add? With that, we'll move on. Legislative Lausanne?
Yeah, so I, I'm planning on setting up meetings with our state elected officials for mid-December, just to kind of get feedback from them and tell us where, tell them where we are at. I also will have the opportunity to meet with Congressman Tiffany in person mid-December. I still will need to meet with our district staff to finish compiling the data and suggestions to present to them, and we had previously spoke, I spoke to you about funding that comes to the district for some of the refugee families, and how that's been affecting us financially, and, and what level of support the federal government is able to, you know, give us in, above what we would get now, which isn't pretty much anything. And I also, at our CISA 9 meeting, the first Wednesday of the month that is, so I'm going to talk to Al Betri again and his team up there about some of the details and their viewpoints, since they work with districts of various sizes here in north central Wisconsin. And then to clarify my comment from last, last meeting, CISA 9, their legislative conferences that I had referenced, they do that between the superintendents and those legislators. So, want to see what they were discussing a little bit last time, and then, kind of makes it a good point to have, you know, direct board members engaging the lawmakers. Not that the board would, you know, totally disagree with where we want to get of the district where superintendents are, but there's probably a little bit of difference there, just to, you know, voice our, our viewpoints and see where the solution sits in the middle on things, so.
Statewide.
Statewide.
Correct. So I appreciate that. It's important information to be talking about the legislators, and also, Al is a very good person up there. He's a WSA ex-administrator as well, done very good things for all of us in the WSA community. So with that, thank you. I'm asking to have the Lausanne District Activity Report put into official record. Take care of that. And, at this point in time, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
Zoom. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.